But if the law is pretty strict, it should have an order.
Right.
He said, what are you talking about?
And they're legal arms, so it's not like we're giving this to anybody.
No, but like if please come to your office and say, this is a student, we're not supposed to give this. It should have an order or the commission of parent. Theoretically, the law has no exception. So Chris, what are you guys doing there? I said, well, where is this change from you? I think all of this is for the community. So what's your point? Finally, just like a patient, so we have an order.
So it's three G.
After the C type thing in ours, you know what? I'm fine with that.
It's finance, item I.
If we're ever defending, we'll say, that's how it's called.
Three to it. Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Not quite.
So all that campaign stuff by July 31st.
I can see how that's it.
Yeah. Good evening and welcome. This is the regular public meeting of the North Brunswick Township Board of Education for Wednesday, June 28th, 2023. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ali.
Here.
Mr. Brockman. Mr. Carter.
Here.
Ms. James.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. Legori.
Here.
Dr. Patel.
Here.
Ms. Toth.
Here.
And Mr. Wen.
Here.
We have a quara.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM on Sunday, January 29th, 2023, in the following manner. Posted on the bulletin board reserved for announcements in the board office, 25 Linwood Place, North Brunswick, mailed to the Home News Tribune, The Sentinel, and the Clerk of the Township of North Brunswick, and delivered to the nine duly elected board members. We do have one presentation this month, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Chiroka.
Thanks, I'm going to head down to the podium.
And board members, if you want to follow along, there's a manila envelope.
I made copies for you because I remember how hard it was for you to see all the numbers last time with the presentations, so you have a copy so you can actually see the numbers. We're talking about some of the numbers.
Thank you.
A little difficult on the slides here. So tonight, I am presenting to you district survey preliminary results review of the New Jersey School Improvement Climate Improvement Project. So this is something that each school is encouraged, each school district is encouraged and really strongly recommended to do climate surveys each year. And so for many, many years, there's been one particular climate survey that the state has recommended, and it's gotten a little old, and it really has not been giving us great results, and it really was just really geared towards students. So Rutgers, in partnership with the Department of Education, put together this group called NJSCI, S-C-I, which is School Climate Initiative, and they worked with data scientists to create surveys that would go out to parents, students, and staff, and coordinate them together. So it's been going on, this is the second year it's been going on, and they've asked more and more districts to be part of the pilot. So this year, knowing that we needed more robust data and information on school climate, we decided that we would ask to be part of this pilot. So we took the initiative to ask to be part of the pilot and were accepted. We do know, and the slide shows us how important a positive school climate and culture are to foster a good environment for learning and youth development that is a result in productive and fulfilling lives. So the DOE supports these efforts to assess, develop, and maintain positive school climates and cultures and other conditions that affect student learning and growth. So in the 22, 23 school year, we started onboarding towards their whole platform. And so to use their platform is very different than how we would take the survey in the past, where we would basically just take a Google, take the survey questions that the state had given us and put them in a Google form and send them out to students. So this platform is much more robust, and we had to, you know, Amy Kita, as our Assistant Superintendent, she, this was one of her initiatives that she was in charge of, and so she had to do a lot of work to really prepare our principals and train our principals who would be administering surveys at each of the schools to making sure everything was set up for them to send this out and for us to send it out to the parents, the students, and how we would do this. So that took some work, and we actually were then ready to roll the climate survey out late January, early February to begin the work to get that out. So it took us a little while to get that there. But this climate survey was developed with the specific needs of New Jersey schools in mind to help schools understand school climate needs and strengths from the perspectives of both student, all students, families, and staff, but also to provide insight into the school community's relationships, safety, sense of connectedness, teaching and learning, and measures of an equitable and supportive learning environment, including supports for social and emotional learning. Okay? So it focuses on all those different parts in the survey. And then one of the things that you'll see at the end is that it also gives a great number of suggestions for actions that the schools could take. So this timeline is our next steps with survey data. So again, the surveys were taken late winter, early spring, the data came in, they did, you know, they did the bear's work of collating it for each of the schools. Then this first step was review the overall results and present them to staff. So the principals reviewed the results and met with their school leadership team to discuss the results. Central office helped create a presentation for them, and then principals presented it to their staff at a faculty meeting. The second step was to meet with their school improvement team, their skip team. Those teams are existing already, the school improvement team, and these regularly to make suggestions on professional learning and school climate. So they talked about, you know, looking at the strengths and needs based on the results of this survey. So obviously, each school would be different. Then they followed up after doing that with the skip team, they followed up with a short Google survey to kind of get more elaboration on some of the areas where they thought they needed more information or open-ended feedback. But this, the Sky survey itself does not allow opportunities for any open-ended feedback. It's really just simply a numerical survey. Then step four was to meet with the skip team again before the end of the school year, analyze the feedback from the follow-up survey, the group response, to group the responses into four or five areas of focus, and determine a goal for each area of focus and identify some next steps and potential solutions for each goal. So then future, future steps will be involved sharing the results with their staff at the beginning of the school year, as well as sharing broadly with the school community what their goals are. So the school teams, skip teams, met to dig deeper into the overall results, and the high school, every, one of the schools did this for each of their results. So the survey domains here, you have the student surveys, you can see where there's overlapping areas, staff surveys, and parent and caregiver surveys. So in students, they focused on academic culture and classroom practices, which was also consistent with staff and parents and caregivers, as were behavioral expectations. And then all three groups also focused on pro-social student interpersonal behaviors, basically acting correctly, properly. Sense of physical safety across all three areas. For students only, there was student sense of belonging, that was important to these. Student voice and involvement was across all three areas, as were supportive and student-staff relationships, and supports for student social and emotional learning. In staff areas, the areas that they were added for staff, checked in about what was collegial support like, what did they, how did they see family support engagement, what did they interpret their leadership support was, and their organizational resources and supports. And then for families, they had fewer of those areas, but no areas independently of any of the other areas. Now, you'll also see at the bottom, it says when we go into the domains, each of those domains, they're coordinated to a designated color, so when you see the results, that color is designated to the domain. And then a flag-eyed icon indicates that the mean score shown is below a preset threshold of 250, 2.50, which may indicate a potential concern, given a number of respondents who had unfavorable perceptions of this topic. You'll also see that there were some domains, there was something that focused on negative student interpersonal behaviors. So items in this domain, the way they were worded was about negative, was in a negative fashion. So it talked about students doing negative things. And so therefore, it was separated from the other domains, and mean scores and distributions were reverse coded, so that higher scores reflect a more favorable conditions, and lower scores indicate less favorable conditions that had to do with the language of the survey. All right, so student results. We had 3,003 students in grades three through 12 complete the survey. The survey does not hit grades K, 3KK, one or two at this point. It's just really only for students in grades three through 12. So that's 3,003 students out of what Genesis shows, about 4,284 students in grades three through 12. So, you know, that is one of the goals for future, giving the surveys to make sure that we're getting all our students. Elementary is easy. High school, I think high school wants to do an extended homeroom when they get the survey again next year to make sure that all respondents take the survey. So this is the page that you might want to look at, because you're not going to be able to see anything on this screen here. You can see it's divided by columns, by school, and it has the domain, and then it has the scores. So again, Linwood School has two columns, because remember, Linwood School covers grades five and six. So they considered students, you know, students three to five took one survey, and students six through eight took another. So the Linwood students in sixth grade, they have their results, and then you have the fifth grade results as well in the first two columns. So the one that had the arrow that had the most, or actually the exclamation point in the triangle, was those negative student interpersonal behaviors. And again, you're going to see that across the board for all schools. And yesterday, we met with our leadership council, and we had each of the principals come up and share a highlight of their survey results, a low light, and potential goals for next year. And each of them all focused in on saying that this was an area of concern. I don't think that's a big surprise coming out of the pandemic with what we've seen of students, you know, their time on devices, their time not socially interacting with each other. We know that has had an impact, and there are a lot of things that we need to work on as staff. And I think that school districts across the country need to focus on, and those are some things that we'll be continuing to talk with you guys about over the summer, and but the schools are already making plans to see how they can work on and improve these negative student interpersonal behaviors. So you see those vary across the board, but anything under 2.5, most of those are all in that two-point, mid, two-point range, some are under 2.5, some are just over 2.5. And so that's definitely an area of focus for each of the schools. You know, I'm not going to read all these results to you, or you can, you can take some time to look. You know, we had looked at, you know, physical safety, sense of physical safety was actually fairly high in here in the threes for the students. Students definitely in certain schools were saying that they wanted stronger student voice and involvement, which is a very important thing for our students. I think across the board, we scored high on student-staff relationships, and that's something, you know, except you see at North Brunswick High School, it was a little lower. So again, that's something that schools would want to work on to try and improve that. It was not, it was still over the 2.5, but still some, an area that they might want to work on. Student sense of belonging across at the bottom, again, in the threes, you had one and a twos for middle school, but the others were, and then a little bit at the high school as well, but the elementary schools, and I think that's typical too of elementary schools, students feel more belonging typically in their elementary school than middle school, high school. You generally see a little bit more of a challenge. And then if they take the averages for all the students in each domain across all of the grades three through 12, you again, you can see the average academic culture and classroom practices was 2.82 out of four. Behavioral expectations, three out of four. Negative student interpersonal behaviors, 2.44 out of four. So again, that's under that 2.5. Pro-social student interpersonal behaviors, 2.88 out of four. Sense of physical safety, again, a strong point, 3.27 out of four. Student voice and involvement, 2.92 out of four. Supportive student-staff relationships, 3.919 out of four. And supports for student social and emotional learning, 3.12 out of four. And sense of belonging average was 2.76. So in staff results, we had 500 families staff completed NJSCI survey. And again, if you remember, we have about 1,000 staff members, but generally, you know, it's the certified staff that will focus more on us, those who have daily interactions with the students. Some principals set it up so the staff would take their surveys during faculty meeting, so that tended to give us better results. And I think that's something that we will, we will aim to also do in the future, is to give them dedicated time to make sure that they are taking this, so we can have the higher numbers of participants in the survey as well. So if you look at the staff results, and again, this is going to be a different picture. So each staff is basing it on their individual school and their perception of what's going on at their school. So again, some key points, you know, if you look across the board, you can see the numbers for academic culture and classroom practices, all in the high twos generally. You have one area of concern at the high school, they're a little lower than 2.5. Behavioral expectations, generally in the high twos and threes, and then again, at the high school, you have that a little bit lower. Negative student interpersonal behaviors, you have some schools, Linwood, Jet Elementary, North Brunswick Township Middle School, all coming in under two, North Brunswick Township High School also coming in under two, and then you have the middle school at 1.8, and Livingston Park and Parsons coming in at 2.22 and 2.40 respectively. So those are across the board, and that's a lot about the teacher's perception of the students, how that students are getting along with each other. Pro-social student behaviors, again, were in the, in the twos, a couple of threes, and some lower ones. Sense of physical safety is a bigger concern for staff. That's an important thing on them, as you can see the numbers in the twos there, and a couple of threes. Student voice and involvement, high twos as well. If you jump down to leadership support, different schools felt, you know, they wanted more support from their leaders, and so that's where each principal will send out some more of those Google questions to kind of dig in and get more information, to try to get feeling for what it is the staff are looking for there. The staff survey averages for academic culture and classroom practice was a 2.78. These are all out of four. Behavioral expectations was 2.98. Again, these are the staff perceptions. Negative student interpersonal behaviors, 2.21, that being the lowest. Pro-social student interpersonal behaviors, that students, you know, acting in positive ways, using those strategies that we try to teach them, getting along with each other, that was 2.73. Sense of physical safety, 2.85. Student voice and involvement, 2.89. Supportive staff and student relationships, 3.21. So they felt that they had created supportive staff for student relationships. And 2.90 for supports provided for student social and emotional learning. Family support and engagement, they scored an average of 2.82. Collegial support of one another was a 3.07, a strong one. Leadership support was an average of 2.64, and organizational resources and support was 2.62. So parent results, we had a total of 667 families complete NJSCI survey. And again, this is our benchmark one, our first one that we sent out, and we are hoping again, and one of our goals will lead to increase that. And I think the more that we present this information at board meetings, at back-to-school nights, at as many places as we can share that we're gathering this, and it's very important for us to get our parents' input on this survey, I think we will see greater participation in future years as we move forward. So here are the parent results. Parents focused in, I won't go on all these. Again, you can see negative student interpersonal behaviors were still a priority for parents. And then you can look at each school, where they are there. And you will note that, we will note that ECC was under the threshold of 10 in most domains and wasn't counted at the average. So jump to the average for parents, again, out of four. Academic culture and classroom practices was 3.18. Behavioral expectations was 3.19. Negative student interpersonal behaviors was 2.55. Pro-social student interpersonal behaviors was 2.94. Sense of physical safety was 3.18. And as a district, you know, we've worked very hard on making sure that we feel, we're communicating that our schools are safe, and I think that that number is a nice shining positive piece for us there. Student voice and involvement was 3.01. Supportive student and staff relationships, 3.17, that was a highlight as well. Supports for student social and emotional learning, 3.02. And family support and engagement, it was actually 3.05. So next step for this survey, what are we doing with all this data? So NJSCI actually, again, because it's a pilot, it hasn't been rolled out for the whole state yet, not everything comes out at once. They actually just rolled out on Monday an NJSCI strategic planning workspace for the staff, the school, school climate leadership team. So if they confirm their priorities in the platform, then, and they've done their strengths and needs analysis in the workspace, and they can set measurable goals for next year. So that's going to be the next steps for the administrative teams and their skips to accomplish that over the summer. So some of the, you know, again, we're on step five, so they'll be sharing results with staff of everything at the beginning of the school year, talking about their specific measurable goals with a presentation on what they're going to be working on. And again, I mentioned that leadership council showed a highlight, a low light, potential goals. They talked about engaging more teacher leaders and other staff in the school climate process. They talked about continuing to, with SEL training for staff. All students and staff continue to participate in our Wellness Wednesdays, and we will be rebranding and retooling our Rebound 2.0 for the 23, 24 school year to tie in with this climate work and the work that's being done across the board for next year on all our goals. The leadership is working on designing more morale builder activities for staff. They are continuing to work on creating, and increasing family and parent engagement for the academic and social events. And for parent surveys, schools would like to have QR codes at the spring conferences to elicit more feedback and responses. They want to continue to educate staff, students, and families in anti-vilain strategies and peer-to-peer relationships. They're designing activities for next year, such as student-teacher advisory groups in grades K to six. I know Livingston Park, it was an old program that they did years ago, before I was principal there with Dr. Bowman, it was the family circle program that they did, where the teachers met with students across the grade level, with almost like a family meeting that they would have several times throughout the year. So they have started to bring that back this year, and will be continuing to do that next year. They're going to continue to expand principal-student advisory groups in grades seven through 12. And then one thing we're hoping to do also is participate in the Rutgers Union Collaborative Project with our associations to build lasting capacity and fruitful, meaningful relationships between leadership, staff, and the board. So those are our preliminary results. There's not a lot of specifics yet, but we're getting a sense of the beginning data, and I think this platform is really robust and gives a lot of information that we weren't getting before, and I think it can only grow as we expand the number of people who are taking the surveys and, you know, digging into, there is so much on this platform, it's almost a little overwhelming. And they have so many resources that, once they do their analysis of their root causes and their concern areas, they can go in and find all sorts of different strategies and things that they can use to work with. So, you know, we're hopeful, you know, we think North Brunswick has a good climate, but we know coming back from the pandemic, there are a lot of things that we need to work on, and we can always improve our school climate and culture, and so we're looking forward to doing that one time to year. Any questions, board members?
I had a quick question.
Absolutely.
I was just wondering, I know you mentioned like some preliminary steps that you're going to be taking. I was wondering, like which of those, being that the negative student interpersonal behavior was kind of the common thread throughout, which one of those connected back to that portion?
So, so I think a lot of that is some of that intentional work with students on, you know, really getting them, Mr. Legori already heard me on my soapbox already, you know, not necessarily in elementary school and middle school, high school, getting them off their devices and interacting with each other, reteaching students and re-engaging them in social interactions, right? And then you have to engage in social interactions and have somebody guiding you, you know, do that. Let's look at people in the eye when we speak to them. Let's, let's remember to give each other, you know, a pat on the back or a snap when we appreciate what they've done. So, so, you know, little steps like that that we can begin to build on, they do a lot of those things through their PBSIS, and just continuing to build on it with like a strong focus on kindness and character development, things like that a lot of schools.
Thanks.
And I don't have a question, but I have a comment. One, I want to thank the district for being insightful enough to deviate from the norm as far as the climate survey that was initially given, and being willing to try something different that actually gives very informative information that helps us navigate the direction that we're headed as far as trying to make progress going forward. So I think this is wonderful. I'm really impressed by the content that is gleaned from this survey, and I'm more impressed by the process embedding in itself a solution and action plan. So I think that that's wonderful, and I'm really encouraged by seeing the results.
So you'll be hearing a lot more about this.
I think the essence of year one is just that, right? It's, it's a mess of data at this point. So what do we do with it is the biggest question. So we're looking forward to that, I would say. And I think as a board, we'd also look forward to how we can dovetail off of that perhaps. If there's goals that the schools are going to set, how can we set board goals perhaps that would interweave with those goals as we go forward this summer and set board goals that also tie into your goals and the district's goals?
Yeah, I think the more we can align those, the better.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, just going with the alignment, seeing how some of the domains are definitely paired with some of the domains we work on in the schools, will we as a board get to see some of the item level domains? I would say those data, and also how, well, moving forward, how will we make sure that we pair some of our social, emotional learning programs and just different tiers of support onto some of these domains to make sure that, you know, if this is going to be our assessment moving forward, I feel like it would be advantageous to ensure that the stuff that we're doing inside the schools, or at least monitoring or somewhere along with these, so we could give ourselves a really good advantage when we're just really measuring compared through the years.
Absolutely. I know the work that Mrs. Havens and Dr. Harry's team has been doing on the rebound, these two are going to start to merge, right? Because we can't have them running as separate, because they really do tie in, and we did so much work with the rebound on the tier interventions of support and SEL strategies and Wellness Wednesdays, but, but they're the same thing now. So it's how do we merge those together and work toward a common goal, so we're not working in cross purposes.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I just want to echo everybody's comments, and I really appreciate that the steps have been taken to kind of measure, you know, where we are as a district, especially in the schools, and looking forward to hearing the steps that kind of each of the administrative teams are going to take to kind of combat these issues that they see.
Yeah, I'm just thinking while I'm here, you know, even some of the board meetings in the fall, maybe, you know, one or two principals at a time, because you know how overwhelming it gets when, you know, all eight principals are presenting all their data. So maybe, maybe it's one or two principals and that same thing about highlight, low light, and just, you know, not slide shows, not all these data things, but just the story, right? What's their story at their school? What's going on with it? And what are they working on? I think just, you know, simple five-minute presentation might be something we could consistently bring to the board.
Quick question also, is there kind of synergies between the different levels of, or different, you know, middle school, you know, Linwood you know, Linwood Middle School, high school especially, you know, so that there's coherency between how, how they are trying to deal with some of these issues at one school, but, and then kind of having that continuation through.
We had, we had leadership council yesterday and that was, that was some of the work that was going on, was sharing across grade levels of where there's challenges were. And so they can hear from each other and have that cross articulation on, on what they're all doing. So they can, and they work very closely together, middle school, high school, Linwood, and so on. So I think that will definitely occur.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good questions. Anybody else? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Folks, one of the policy and regulations that we received in backup this month was policy and regulation 2361 on acceptable use of computer network and computers and resources. Every year, we hold a public hearing on this policy specifically. So at this time, we're going to hold a public hearing on this policy. If anyone wishes to approach and discuss, now would be your opportunity. You have three minutes. Seeing none, would someone please move to close this portion of the public meeting?
I motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We've closed this public session.
Thank you. We're up to item eight on our agenda. Ms. Toth, would you move on item eight, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to approve on the following board minutes. Conference public meeting, May 10th, 2023. Executive meeting, May 10th, 2023. Regular public meeting, May 24th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All the minutes have been accepted.
Item nine, any communications?
No communications.
We'll move on. Any old business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have, wanted to make a note for the record that I inadvertently voted yes instead of abstaining on curriculum item 1D and transportation item 1A in a previous vote.
Thank you for pointing that out. Anything else under old business? Any new business this month? If not, administrative report?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening to our, all our families, guests, and viewers here tonight. On Tuesday afternoon, excuse me. On Wednesday afternoon, it was an honor to preside over North Brunswick Township graduation at Jersey Mike's Arena in Biscataway. 478 students graduated. Congratulations to our valedictorian, Aryan Anand, who was attending Temple University in the fall, and our salutatorian, Alex Paritanza, who is attending Rutgers University in the fall. The class of 2023 will be moving on to attend many four-year schools, including Monmouth University, Northeastern, Purdue, Rowan, and George Washington University, to name a few. Over 21 graduates will be attending Rutgers University right in our own backyard. Our other students will be attending Middlesex College and some will be starting a career or entering the military. We are extremely proud of our MBTH graduate, HS graduates and look forward to our accomplishments in the future. Our extended year school year program for special education students kicks off virtually on Friday this week and will continue on Monday, July 3rd, and then obviously closing for the July 4th holiday and continuing in person on Wednesday, July 5th. This program will continue through August 11th, 2023. Additional summer programs kick off next Wednesday and run through July on Mondays through Thursdays. This year, many of our schools participated in the Middlesex County replenish program. Our schools collected non-perishable food items to be donated to the Middlesex County Food Bank. Our district was able to collectively donate over 5,000 pounds of food to the food bank. That's quite an impressive number and it helps other people in our community. But we are so proud of our students and our districts for their community service efforts because that shows that we are, are making outreach to our community and we understand the needs there. A big thank you to our staff, families, students, and Board of Education for all of their work and support that helped us achieve another successful school year. Our leadership team had our full day retreat yesterday in which we were already beginning to plan for our work for the 2324 school year. I would like to take a moment, board, and introduce you to Mr. Chris Guerra. He is our new transportation supervisor. He starts July 1st, taking over the role that Mr. Keener is retiring from after many years in district. Has some big shoes to fill, but we're confident Mr. Guerra will do a great job. So welcome to the district.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. So we're looking forward to having him take over and I wish everyone a safe and relaxing summer. That's it for my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll move on to our committee reports. Let's start with education. Dr. Patel.
Thank you. The education committee met on Wednesday, June 14th, 2023. In regards to assessments and grants, the ESEA grant allocation was released on May 25th and the application is due on July 10th and we're expecting it to be completed on time. The teachers pension annuity fund, the district costs have increased now. The district also received an award for our participation in the Walk to School on September 13th and the Bike Rodeo on October 12th. The district also received an empowering schools grant for $6,000 and a special thanks to Mary Engel for leading this effort. The district also has good participation from the parents in the Special Education Parent Teacher Organization. And we are working with the Special Education Parent Advisory Group to create more opportunities for an advisory group. Juneteenth was recognized at all grade levels in all the schools on June 19th. The curriculum revisions are ongoing for various courses at the high school. And in addition, there will be three new courses offered at the high school on art, music, and human development. The district has been partners for about seven years with Rutgers University for a teaching program which is offered one day a week. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Human Resources, Mr. Wang.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Human Resources Community Relations Committee met on Wednesday, June 14th also to discuss various personnel and community topics. And for all those on tonight's agenda who are either resigning or retiring, the board thanks you for your service and wishes you well. As of last Wednesday, there are a number of certificated and support staff openings in the district for the 2324 school year. Openings have been posted on our website and on social media. Our administrative teams continue to seek out potential staff as well as reassign personnel based on our district's needs. And as you can see in tonight's agenda, there are a number of items being motioned, including certificate and support staff appointments, summer work, district appointments, and athletic and club appointments. And for those who are new to the district, we welcome you warmly to the North Brunswick School District and we wish you all a great summer. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Business operations?
Sure, President Legori. The Business Operations Committee met on Wednesday, June 14th, 2023. As to facilities, the committee received an update on open projects at the high school, Linwood, and the schedule of projects to take place at the various school locations. As previously reported, the ROD grant application was submitted, which if awarded would alleviate costs related to upgrading technology to control and manage our HVAC and essential system in our district. The committee discussed personnel action items which are reflected on the agenda. There will be annual mercury testing of our gym floors. We previously reported that the district would be utilizing new equipment for our copiers, which will begin in the first week of July. As to district operations, bid openings, annual policy renewals, annual contract renewals, and annual authorizations. Those are listed on today's agenda to permit the district to continue to conduct its normal business during the summer and for the upcoming 2324 school year. Finally, as to policies, the district reviewed policy 8612 regarding daycare and policy 7250 regarding school facilities and naming. And that concludes my report. I wish everyone a wonderful summer.
Thank you. As you can hear, a lot going on. It may be summer, but we're not slowing down, right?
Not one bit.
Ms. James, would you take item 11?
Sure. I move to approve the administrative, student, and committee reports.
A second. We'll back off the student portion of that motion, if you don't mind.
Yes, no student. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All the reports are accepted.
Okay, great. With that, folks, we'll review our lengthy agenda for this evening, which we've all received electronically. Anything that's changed, as usual, you will see in bold. And with that, we're already on page two. Let's begin with page three. Page four and page five. Page six and page seven. Page eight and page nine. Page 10 and page 11. Page 12 and page 13. Page 14 and page 15. Page 16 and page 17. Page 18 and page 19. Page 20 and page 21. Page 22 and page 23. Page 24 and page 25. Page 26 and page 27. Page 28 and page 29. Page 30 and page 31. Page 32 and page 33. Page 34 and page 35. Page 36 and page 37. Page 38 and page 39. Page 40 and page 41. Page 42 and page 43. Page 44 and page 45. Page 46 and page 47. Page 48 and page 49. Page 50 and page 51. Page 52 and page 53. Page 54 and 55. With a wrap up on page 56. Any further questions on consent agenda? Okay. We'll open it up to the public for agenda items only at this point. If anyone has any questions, please approach and you'll have three minutes. Seeing none, would someone please move to close this portion of the public meeting?
I motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This portion is closed.
Thank you. Ms. Keith, would you motion on consent agenda item 15, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to approve the following consent agenda items, personnel 1 and 2, curriculum 1 and 2, miscellaneous finance items 1 through 4, policy and transportation.
Second.
Any further discussion? We'll need a roll call. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes, but I need to abstain from approving finance item 3G.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes, but I abstain on curriculum item 2K on page 33 as it pertains to myself.
Thank you. Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes, but I need to abstain from curriculum 2K as it pertains to myself.
And Mr. Wang?
Yes, but I also abstain from curriculum item 2K as it pertains to myself, as well as transportation item 1F.
Thank you. All the motions have been approved and accepted.
Thank you, Ms. Ash. Page 55. We will now open it up for public session on any matter. Once again, anyone who wants to approach, you'll have three minutes. Seeing none, would someone please move to close this portion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This public session is closed.
And with that, we'll be motioning to go into closed session whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presented exist. Now therefore be it resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education that the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as followed. Personnel matters, superintendent's annual evaluation. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Could someone please move that we go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We can go into closed session.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Could we get a motion to go back into open session, please?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're back in session.
And with that, could we get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Have a great evening, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so Haley, what happened was they diverted my plane to Ferg, and then we ended up having to rent a car. I mean, it took like the entire day.